Twenty twenty three to order. Um, this is being conducted in a hybrid fashion as per uh state uh allowance. The first order of businesses pledge allegiance. Charles, would you please?
We pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Looking up on the screen. And I don't. Anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, somebody's logging in. Let's just give a second here. Anyone wishing to address the board in the public forum on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Let's move on to item three, approve the minutes. First, the three dot one, the May fifteenth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Okay, well, I wasn't here, so.
Second, uh, comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
I would stay.
Uh, that motion carries. Uh, three dot two, uh, the approval of the minutes of May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, special meeting and public hearing. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
A second.
Second.
Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none. Uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Hi.
I abstain. Wasn't here.
That motion opposed. No extensions because standing either.
I was there.
Oh, you were.
I.
Thank you.
I I believe I zoomed in. That was the call Dallas Tracy night.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Okay, that motion carries. Item four. Public Works Director Dave Castro, for not one, come on down to the table, Dave. Consider take possible action to purchase a new mowing head for the over rail mower.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so our mower is ten years old and they've been repairing it for ten years. So the welds on the head itself. It's time to get a new head for the mower. So that's why we're looking for approval to to purchase the uh the new head on the mower. The arm is fine. That was replaced two years ago, but the head itself needs to be replaced.
It's a head of mowers. You have brush and everything.
So right now what we're using is a mower head and running into a lot of brush. The this head that I'm proposing is more of a a brush type head where um it will take down grass and saplings.
They're pretty common now, yeah. Do you go the other direction or anything?
It's well, it's so it's on a drum and it has these, they call them axles, axles, right, and they go.
I see the highway to trees.
Um, they they expect the lifetime where these are performing within the expected the life cycles?
Yes, yes, this this head will last us quite a quite a long time. Um, we should get ten years at least out of it, uh, because what we're doing now is we're using, so our mower head now has these little blades. So if we hit a sapling or anything, they bust off, you have to re-weld them. Uh, so it takes the drum out of um, out of balance. Whereas this is more of an axle head. We've talked to other towns and they say that on average they're replacing maybe one every year, year and a half, whereas we're going through about three to five thousand in blades right now a year with these little ones.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
Some moved.
Second.
Uh, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, staying, usual hearing, no, that motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Well, it was easy.
Item five, Parks and Rec Director Rick Maynard, who five dot one, consider suggested clarification to rules and regulations related to town code. Uh, two eighteen, link and soliciting. And Attorney Barrett, I see you on the screen. At least your name, but not you and likeness, but um, you may be asked away in here. Rick, you wanted to talk a little bit about why you were here today.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, so it it's, I believe the the agenda is chapter two eighteen, I think it's two fourteen is the code for regulations in parks. The specific one is about um preferred peddler vending. So we had an issue, I think I sent you the note, so I won't go through the whole thing. We had an issue at Jacob's Beach, the first weekend they're open twice, uh, Saturday and Monday, where two vendors showed up, ice cream vendors. Uh, the gate guards informed them what we thought was a regulation, can only have one vendor of the same type at the same time. The uh vendor would leave, they called the police, finally they came and they they did leave. Same guy showed up on Monday and instead of parking, he kept circling around. So he wasn't technically parking. He kept going, driving around with the music playing and stuff. There was an ice cream vendor and the second guy showed up and just kept driving around the parking lot. Uh, it was a challenge for the gate guards, uh, you know, again, asking to leave. Um, and the police called me and they asked me where the ordinance was. I couldn't remember. I was having to talk to the chief on uh, Tuesday and he pointed out that, you know, which one it was, that chapter two fourteen there. So I think that I may be wrong, but I thought the intent of the ordinance was not to have two of the same type of vendor at the same time. Um, we didn't designate any area, I think we're going to now. They, I mean, they know where to park. They're pretty good about parking where they should be parking. Uh, Lieutenant Profferson and I went around to all the parks um, three or four years ago to pick out spots where it possibly could be. So the one that's there, whoever shows up, they do generally park in the right spot, but it's not marked. And so we're gonna we have to upgrade the update the uh handicap parking signal. It's kind of worn out now, so we're gonna redo that. And when we have that done, we'll we'll mark out, you know, a s- a square or spot for the uh vendors to park. But I think I'm just looking for clarification of um, uh, do we want one spot? Would you want two? If it's two, can we indicate it's only one of a particular type of product at the same time, like not two ice cream vendors or two hot dog vendors or something? And I was thinking too, in the event there is like, say, the pizza truck or hot dog cart or and ice cream, I mean, there are two different kinds of vendors there. And the commission, Parks and Rec Commission, been for a number of years, I've been wanting to have a food truck down there and they just don't seem to stay. We had the hot dog guy a couple of years ago and um, maybe they're just not making a good business there, you know, stay there very much, but uh, and we had the taco truck, I think, a number of years ago. But I think they found it's more profitable on the green as, you know, stay at Jacob's Beach. But um, I I guess I'm just looking for a little clarification so we can let our gate guards know, is it okay for to to have two ice cream trucks or not? Uh, and then, or do we want just one vendor at a time? I I have to say, the other vendor is the lemonade, lemonades. He's, he's up on the boardwalk, so it's a difference, not in the parking lot.
Do they pay for those?
They they don't, they, well, used to, but then I was, you know, that was um, I think they gated a couple of years ago, but he does give a donation. He gave a good donation, a splash pad.
Right.
Yeah.
By he being the lemonade? Who is he?
Uh, lemonade.
Don't let it go.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, that the donation is from the lemonade, how about from the food truck?
No.
This seems complicated to me. What's to stop somebody else from parking next to Nate? I mean, I mean, the whole boardwalk. Well, I I'm setting up. How how Nate's allowed to set up there? I have nothing against him, but um, how how come uh somebody else doesn't come and set up next to Nate and sell um donuts or something? You know what I mean? How how did you?
Yeah, he's been approved by the commission. I guess, again, I guess it's kind of first come, first served, which the ordinance says, you know, but um, I mean, it's a good point if somebody came with a if something else.
That's that's a commission decision because you have responsibility for the parks. We have the parking lot.
Right.
So that is your, uh, that's a commission decision.
Yeah.
You might want to think about that too. So, and back to the commission. So right now in the parking lot, there are two spaces currently.
We can mark, there aren't two marked. I mean, I think we can fit two, max. I wouldn't go any more than, basically they set up where where the asphalt kind of curves kind of near the picnic pavilion, between the sort of picnic pavilion and the boardwalk, that area there. It's a, I mean, that's the, that's the best spot, uh, because it's not taking a parking spot. It's not really a parking space. Uh, and usually their s- uh, serving side is on the grass, not on the parking lot side, you know, kids in the parking lot. Yeah.
Sorry, I was, my gut reaction is that if you try to restrict it to one of a certain type, I think that puts the gate guards in an even worse.
Really tough spot.
Yeah, really don't like the idea of them. It's not right to put them in that spot. So, I mean, what's the worst case is so there's two ice cream trucks or there's two hot dog trucks.
Or you issue like, have even a nominal application fee, you know, it's like, you want this spot, you know, ahead of time and it's fifteen bucks.
Can I, well, can I comment on that? Yeah, so that's what I used to do. And and because the very first, I don't know, it wasn't the first year, but around the first time it just started happening, it was almost a fistfight with two ice cream vendors and right in front of the gate guards. I was here, you know, they were, I mean, it was, came very close. That's like twenty eight years ago. And so I started charging a a fee. I would go to the police department and ask who has a permit to sell ice cream or anything down there. And then we, it was called a, it wasn't a bid per se, but we were sent out um, uh, like a request for proposals to all the, those who have had a permit. So whoever offers the most to the town, you know, gets gets the right to to sell down. And but they have exclusive, right? Nobody else could come in. They had exclusive. But a few years ago, the foreign police chief said, we couldn't do that. And we were doing it for about twenty five years. And and so um, this, it changed the ordinance where it first come, first served, anybody can just go in. There's nothing coming back to the town.
Even if we charge a fee, we can't control it?
Well, we were controlling it. That's what I'm saying, we did.
So why, I don't understand why the police chief said you couldn't do it anymore.
I I don't know.
Because because the peddler's license allows them to sell within the town, uh, adding an additional fee to do it on a tenant property was uh deemed to be inappropriate. And and let's go back to the original premise here. The board selectman controls the parking lot, right? They control the grounds. So when we passed this ordinance, I don't think we were explicitly defining how many spots in the ordinance. That was to have been a, an agreed to process. For instance, we met at the marina to determine uh, where and how many with the the commission members. So we determined that there were two spots down there. I'm not sure that we ever agreed specifically to the number of spots. I do recall you guys, you being concerned about uh the size of some of these vehicles could potentially take up more, more than one parking space. And on a busy Saturday or a Sunday or a holiday, um, reserving those would be, you couldn't come in uh into things. So I, my recollection, again, it's not that good as, it's not as good as it used to be. Was only one that you guys were talking about, one. Rick and I had some conversations last week about this, and I think uh, there are a number of times when people rent the pavilions, right? And they bring multiple trucks in. Uh, and
Yeah.
So, uh, but those are being brought in by people who are renting, renting.
Yeah.
Now they're taking up parking spaces, no question, no doubt about it, but that's, that is part and parcel to the rental, which I think is completely separate. So um, and again, Pete, I know you're you're on a line, uh, you're probably uh digging through uh two eighteen and two fourteen to refresh your memory about uh, what we did approve or did not approve.
Hi, uh, good morning. What what I'm looking at is um is the ordinance that, you know, relates to the uh peddlers and solicitors. And I I don't think, I'll give this some more thought, but I don't think you need an ordinance amendment. You you've got a provision in here that the board of selectmen upon recommendation of the chief of police and for applicable provisions, the police commission may make such rules or regulations regarding solicitors and peddlers consistent with this chapter as the board deems the public welfare requires and as otherwise in compliance with laws. In other words, I think if you chose to, you can address this by a board of selectmen rule, because as you mentioned, Matt, you're talking about the parking lot, not really, you know, the beach itself. Um, so w- w- what I would propose to do is let me talk to Rick a little bit offline. Uh, I'm not aware, are there, what are the, do you have rules already set up by the board of selectmen with respect to uh Jacob's Beach?
I do not, I do not believe so, other than the fact that we had uh approved Jacob's Beach as a location where uh uh peddlers could uh pedal.
I I I think it makes a lot of sense. A couple of things come to my mind. One, whatever we end up with, there should be a card for the gate guards to sort of say, here's, here's the the town rule on this. So pick up with, call town hall if you're not happy. I I'd be really interested in revisiting this question of whether we can charge a nominal fee. I'm not looking to make money, but what it does is it commits somebody to doing it. And if they're gonna spend even a few bucks to do it, they're gonna be there and they're not gonna sort of hit and miss. So unless there's, we're absolutely prevented, it seems to me there's two separate things. The right to pedal is one and the right to use that particular parking lot that those particular days is sort of another. I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, subject to getting underneath of it a little bit. Not to second guess anybody here, but I mean, it seems to me it's worth a lot to look to see whether we can do it, which I'm dumping right on you, Pete, sorry.
I agree with Lou a hundred percent. I was gonna say, we gotta revisit that. This doesn't make any sense to me that we can't charge. I I think, I don't mind too, that makes some sense and everything, but if we start charging for the spaces, that gives us the control. I mean, it takes it out of the gate. Hands and everything. In the meantime, if that's gonna take a while to sort out, my personal vote for this summer or next weekend or fourth of July weekend, obviously. Uh, you know, might might be, I I I can see two and I I'd let your commission decide about who and what and where and and that and that kind of stuff. Two doesn't seem unreasonable to me though. Uh, I just wanted to double check. It seems like we're having an issue with a particular vendor at this point. And he, no matter what we do, he'll still have the opportunity. All he has to do is show up earlier.
True.
Yeah, so I mean, we're not limiting his access to sales or anything like that. It's his effort.
So let me review this idea of the fee again. So does every vendor have to sign up and pay a fee at the beginning of the season or they have to pay every day?
Spaces and they, you know.
Then why would have, why would have peddler, why would a vendor even register in Guilford if they, if they couldn't have one of those?
Yeah.
Well, that's why, that's, that's, that's one of the most attractive places to pedal during the summertime.
Right, so let's charge for it. I mean, it would be like setting up a stand.
Seems so simple, first comfort, those two spaces, first.
I, you're, I the way it is today, they pay, they sign up as a, as a peddler, they pay a fee to be able to pedal.
What is that fee? Just out of curiosity, do you know?
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, we
Saying it's like double dipping.
It is double dipping.
Well, it is our property, but okay, I can see, that's a good point. I I forgot about that.
So so, and I want, I want, I want to noodle this even further. A vendor can park in front of the town hall. That's town property. Do we charge those people? Do we charge those people?
There was bad dog guys out there a couple of years ago.
All right, yeah, that's a, that's a valid point, but I still think, I tried to find some way to to give Rex's commission some indoor to town. Some controls so that I just don't think the gatekeepers are the right people that should be making, you know, get into these discussions with people. You know, if we could make it cut and dry some way, then, you know, X Y Z vendor has this spot for these dates, you know, it just.
So it could be like any other super desirable um reservation out there, the thirty days ahead of time, you gotta sort of book your window. If one Saturday, June twenty seventh, you gotta book it. You can not necessarily have to charge, but there's two slots available. Sign on at six o'clock in the morning. Thirty days ahead of time.
It's a used town property. It's not a venue, not a vending.
And then you're putting more of the gatekeepers again because the guy says I signed up and the gatekeeper doesn't see it. I think just they pay the permit, you get the two. I don't even think it's a problem if it's two ice cream. I think I should just keep it as simple, as simple as possible. Yeah. Yeah.
Cause that's where the, that a little confused is first come, first served. So if the first guy is there, he's thinking, well, I'm there first, you know, and then another one showed up. Um, and I only suggest, it could be one spot. I don't, you know, I'm not really married to one.
I did like the idea of this guy, you know, it sounds like we have an issue with a particularly aggressive peddler or whatever.
There, there may be another way to talk about this, and that is that we send something out to every registered peddler. We put the rules.
Parted email.
We put the rules of the road in place. We send them, we must have an email address or a mailing address or all of them. If we, if there is an issue with inappropriate behavior on the part of the vendors with teenage kids, then we we could reserve the right to pull their uh permit.
Yeah, that that would be a good.
So I think, I think, you know, we can, we can help ourselves here by setting the expectations amongst the peddler community as to what the rules are, number one. Two, and any violation of that or any harassment will immediately uh result in the revocation of their ability to pedal on the town of Guilford.
Does that exist in the permit process at this point?
Yeah, without refund.
Well, that's perfect. That's, that's what happened. The gate guards were saying to the guy, he was wondering, here, you can't come in. But, you know, can't thinking you were doing the right thing and he just went right by and said, I'm coming anyway.
Right, well, that's a, that's a, that's a phone call to supervisor and the police department.
They did, yeah.
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 And, you know, excuse my, excuse my, idiots are idiots and a-holes are a-holes. And they're gonna, they're gonna be people who do this to teenage because they think they can intimidate them. And there's only one way to deal with a bully.
Let's just ask this question. Was the fellow that we had the issue with, person that we had the issue with, does he have a vending permit?
He does. I checked with the chief and uh, I mean, we talked about this.
Nothing in our permitting process at this point that says misbehavior gets.
Well, he said his permit uh expires June seventh in a couple of days, so it's up to whether they want to do it or not, but I told them the problem happened twice with the same vendor.
I can actually weigh in on this a little bit.
I would put that in writing.
Chris?
Yeah, I actually, uh, just to weigh in, I spoke with that vendor the other day when he came to renew his permit and had a very lengthy discussion with him about the peddling uh rules and regulations that are given out to every person that comes in to apply for a peddler's permit. Uh, and I highlighted the area for the preferred vendor uh locations down at Jacob's Beach and expressed to him that there is only one spot currently. Um, it is not marked, so that is something that we asked that Rick work on with Park and Rec to make sure that it's a formally marked spot because just having it as a spot that everybody typically knows that that's the preferred vendor location isn't helpful for us. It needs to be very concrete in where it's located and what that specified area is, so that when we do have two vendors going down there, we could say this person was here first, you do have to leave. There's only one spot. Um, that would be helpful in that regard. And also just with reference to having some sort of special permit or anything like that for down at Jacob's Beach, uh, currently it's two hundred dollars to get the permit for the town for the peddler's permit. Uh, they get an annual permit through our records division. Um, so anything in addition to that, if that's of consideration, I think in all, i- i- it would make the most sense to have that outside of the regular peddler process because it, it makes it difficult for us to regulate that because somebody's gonna be applying for multiple permits if that's the case versus just the one.
Is there, is there anything in the permitting process uh for punishment for misbehavior?
Yeah, it's, it's in there that if they, uh, it's actually specific in there, if they're causing some sort of disturbance or breach of peace, that does actually give us the opportunity to pull that permit, which that was also very expressly discussed with that particular vendor when he came in.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if we need to start changing regulations other than within the commission. I don't have a problem with two personally, but i- it sounds like we just got to enforce what we have.
Yeah, and then
Just don't issue the permit on June sixth.
Those are the only spots, the vendors only and, you know, only here.
Yeah.
Maybe that gets everything. And I wouldn't make the distinction between the type of product, because what happens if you have a pizza truck who happens to have frozen, the box of frozen ice cream bars?
Yeah.
Then you're gonna be getting into that problem.
Yeah, that's a part correct.
Sure.
Well, so, cause I know, again, we're just like, we're responsible for the parking lot to get the Parks and Rec commission.
We're gonna, we're gonna give you the discretion to choose the number of spots you wanna use, one or two, uh, or more if you think it's appropriate. Um, so, and and like I did, like the, the, what we did with the marina, I'd be happy to be at that meeting. It was, we had representatives, I think it was Butch, myself and a couple of the commission members, the marina commission members, and we decided how many and where. Now, unfortunately, somebody pulled down the sign because they don't like the fact that there's two spots dedicated for food vendors at the far end by the boat launch. Uh, somebody, somebody literally took the sign down. So.
We're gonna hang it right in the, in the, you know, on the asphalt there. So they'll say, you know, vendor parking or something like that. Cause you know, another sign down there.
So your assumption is that they're gonna be in that turnaround?
Yeah. Uh, so commission, we're meeting tonight, we're actually doing our park walk tonight. We're starting at five. We've been there, we, you know, we, we do this at least once a year, we walk at least several of the parks. It, we'll go to Jacob's, we'll actually go down there and we'll look at the area, so the commission has good understanding what we're talking about, whether we think we can fit one or two. And then so uh, if if, then we'll have the meeting uh uh tonight after that. So if they vote for two, for example, i- i- it would be okay, you think, or you want their decision if it can be two ice cream vendors or one ice cream or something else?
To that's what, we're gonna give you the authority to make the decision.
Okay.
But we don't care. We have no problem with just two ice cream guys. Yeah.
The market will take care of it. One of them is gonna actually throw their hands up and say this is not worth overlapping.
That's better.
Good point.
They wanna know our opinion.
Get some boxing gloves, please.
No, no fee, got it.
No, that's fair enough.
Okay.
All right.
Calabaza.
So, all right, so so Rick, you came here looking for an answer and we said, no. Your decision as to how you want it, but I I think you just heard and we support.
Yeah.
So what are we gonna build? And, you know, you know, multiple vendors of the same property.
Multiple dedicated spots, and I would throw something in there about no uh circling.
Right, right.
Oh, that circling.
That's a problem. I mean, that's exactly what you don't want.
People were like playing with the music.
Yeah, no, it's a catastrophe. Cause people walking in and out of those cars.
Yeah.
We have the means to enforce it. You only have to do it once or twice. I mean, losing his license and getting fined or arrested, that's gonna take care of that problem fast.
All right, well, thanks for your guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Matt?
Okay, uh, item six, facilities engineer Steve Nider, here to discuss and take possible action.
Matt, can I jump in a sec?
Yes, Pete.
Okay, do, do you wanna consider um since the board of selectmen actually has control over the parking lot, actually deferring that specifically by way of a motion to uh Park and Rec to um resolve?
Um, we could just endorse what they come back with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that work?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that'll work, but I I I think you don't want to just informally feed control like that. So one way or the other, it's fine.
Uh, Pete, not to quibble, but I'm not sure that this board officially uh designated two spots at the town marina. They turf that uh to an administrative decision, um, which was the eventual result of the meeting at the uh marina commission, at the marina with the representatives that I mentioned earlier. So uh, but we certainly could, uh, we could endorse it once, uh, once it comes back.
Yeah, that's fine.
Probably at that time, and and that time, check with the marina folks and see if they're still happy with their arrangement and and endorse that one as well.
That's fine. All right, thanks. Just wanted to throw it out there.
Great, thank you. Okay. We're here to discuss and take possible action in contract with Universal Cleaning and Restoration for deep cleaning the Guilford Town Hall building.
Um, you had suggested getting it done.
Yep.
And what I've got three prices, always being universal cleaning and restoration. This would be done on a weekend and hopefully over the two day process, go through clean lights, carpets, wipe down the walls, everything.
This is, uh, let me just talk a little bit about this. This is uh, at the request of some of the employees at Town Hall, uh, the the building hasn't had a deep cleaning in a long time. We have, let's decide, suffice to say, we've had some challenges with available personnel uh on Steve's team relative to uh being able to do certain types of activities and deep cleaning is now one of those. Uh, and this building also has a significant amount of traffic. The restroom facilities are used extensively by folks um just walking in. Uh, they happen to know that there's a meeting that takes place right next door. And, you know, half a dozen people are coming uh over here to use the facilities immediately thereafter. So uh this building is also significantly
Yes.
Maybe a lot of us are updating, but so uh
Are there any upcoming? Yeah. I I was thinking of rugs and digging, but are there any upcoming?
Oh, yes.
Construction updates in the near future that we should either do before we do this or I just wanna I wanna have a deep clean and then come in and replace all the carpet.
We're, we're a little ways away from replacing the carpets because when we We're, we're a little ways away from replacing the carpets because when we replace these carpets, we have to move everybody out of this building. So, I, and, and I, I'm still looking for the answer, how do we provide access to the wall while we do that?
It's gotta be moved out.
Yeah, so there are, there are some, some challenges, so, this is, you know, this is to do.
The bias time.
Even with replacing it, that, that level change, I mean, these rugs were installed without moving out.
Yeah, that's because you're blowing them down, as you go to pull them up, if it moves two pieces of VCT tile, you gotta shut this place down. And it's, it's inevitable, two tiles are coming up.
And, and one of the biggest challenges here is there's a single air handling system, so you can't isolate. Floor by floor or area by area, so it is, unless we invest. And put in seven handlers, but that may wind up uncovering.
I think that'll be with, with the new layout, but this, if we get everybody out, we can.
We couldn't isolate, let's say, I'm gonna give an example of Town Clerk's office, we couldn't seal that office, do that office. No, we'd move the people out of Town Clerk, which is the worst.
It would be very difficult and very, very expensive. The way I was hoping to do it is move everybody out, cause then we can go through and remodel walls because. The tax collector's office is way too big. Uh, Town Clerk's office is probably too big, but always too wide, I mean, at that point you could. Move walls around and make it more efficient and more storage and regain a lot of the things that we've lost over the years. You know, we can redo the bathrooms and make them up to.
When is the board going to vacate?
They're still, they're still doing the building outfit, um. I don't know the answer to that, but. It's swing space for part of Town Hall. It's not the, not the entirety of it.
Well, your office and that kinda stuff, yeah.
It's not really accessible, it's got different steps.
My office is the least of the concerns, it's the, it's the public access areas. That get the traffic that we need to be most concerned about.
What would you do with the Paul Clerk's office?
Other than replicate it in another location, because it has to be locked, right?
It's gotta be locked and it's gotta be conditioned.
Steve and I have been, Steve and I have been playing with this for a little while.
It's a biggie.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna need to hire some folks who have some experience in doing these kinda things because.
All the phone lines, everything has to be.
I call a contractor, well, we have to renovate apartments in my house, so I don't do the design work on that. Well, my wife does.
The boss.
All right, so, uh, anything, any other questions? You, you uh, when I solicited three quotes.
Should've been submitted.
Does this require any special, I mean, I read through the description of a deep cleaning, it doesn't sound like deep cleaning to me, it sounds like regular cleaning. Is there any special equipment that we don't have? I mean, what, what I'm thinking is, it's a lot of money, and I, I know you can't do it with your existing staff, but. Is there some other way of doing this with town employees who might wanna?
Can we, can we ever do town employees with overtime or something?
Something, I mean, it's nine thousand dollars to clean a two, two-story, two stories, it just seems to me, and again, if you read the description of what they're doing, it's. It's dusting and cleaning bathrooms.
Well, it's wiping down everything, you know, lights, walls, ceilings, return, everything, all the desks, underneath the desks.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, um, one of the quotes in here gives a price of a hundred dollars an hour, they've got three, three people working for a week, I think is what they're saying. Forty hours times three, it must mean three people. Um, I could see that, three people spending a week on it, definitely about a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but you get a few town employee, better part of that.
I mean, plus they come in with all the cleaners and products, equipment and stuff to scrub the VCT floors and. Stuff versus what, what we have, we don't have enough for everybody.
So you bring up a good point, and, but Steve and I had that conversation, do we have the capacity to do it? And without denigrating any of our town employees, I don't think so.
And it's gotta be dedicated, it's one of those things you gotta stop what you're doing and just do that, and, and these crews. You know, come in and that's all they do, I mean, it's, you know, the, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. But the two things that I, I, you know, compare it to is. From union negotiations, I understand what the cost of a town employee is, and you add into that overtime and the rest of it. You're gonna get darn close to that number, number one, and number two, uh, back when I was in the industry. Uh, you know, we did similar things where there were individual projects or cleaning, things like this. And you, they have these dedicated crews and. Pretty remarkable, I mean, they don't have any discussion, they come in and they just strip them. Take the line, to clean things that you say. Think of clean lines, I'm thinking of stuff like that, you know, they, they, they do it all day, every day.
I, I'll give you a small example, like, uh, went to water, the plant that's on the window facing green. And I looked and we've got, there's dust and dirt all the way along the windowsill, and cobwebs behind, like little radio I've got there. That's the stuff that's not getting done on, 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 this is, we're getting basically floors vacuumed, uh, you know. Bathrooms, bathrooms cleaned, so, and we've got one guy that does how many buildings?
Yes, at least five.
So.
It's a lot of bathrooms.
It sounds like you've discussed it into detail, I mean, that's not.
All right, uh, is there a motion approved, uh, of the warning of the contract, universal cleaning and restoration for eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll say.
Uh, any further comments or questions?
I've never heard of this company. Is anybody else familiar, have we got some recommendations?
I've heard of their company out of Wallingford, um, and I used, I think they were occasionally used at the hospital association. Uh, the hospital association, but not regularly.
Right.
Okay, so we've done some due diligence, the real.
And I, you probably said this, but I missed it, they're gonna come in after hours for a week?
Saturday or Sunday.
You're gonna do it all in two days?
I don't wanna, you know, bother anybody here, I mean, vacuuming and cleaning, it's gonna be a big deal, so.
Right.
You see more sensitive over the weekend when they get in and, you know.
So, I'm assuming it's yourself or somebody is gonna.
Somebody will be here.
Verify what they're doing.
Correct. Well, I don't wanna let anybody into Matt's office or finance or.
You know, look under the tables after they say they cleaned it.
Somebody will be here.
So, is this gonna be like, uh, when we had someone come in to clean our house at home? You gotta clean up your house before. That's just picking up, that's not.
It's hard.
You don't see my old office, all right, uh, we have a motion on the floor, let me try your minds all in favor. Opposed, same, refuses, there are none motion carries, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, town engineer Janice Blazier, consider and take possible action to waive the town RFQ, RFP process. To receive proposals from select engineering firms on the on-call list at South Central Regional Council Governments. For conceptual design services and assistance with grant writing for potential complete streets projects of Long Hill Road and North Madison Road. For you.
Okay, so, I've kind of done different things than what the purchasing uh. Policy requires because I've had this discussion with Pam and I wanna have it with Peter, that it's kinda set up. Purchasing requirements for bringing on a consultant for like a large project, it's really set up for the. State Board of Education building program. Um, and that program is pretty well defined before you get to the point, because you've already done a full analysis. Of what your specific program needs are for your school district or for that particular school. Before you go into that RFQ or RFP process. So, having gone through this in Bran- Branford, I know that that's the way it's set up to really cater to that type of big program. Um, infrastructure projects, uh, in public works uh world, really do more of an RFQ process. And then get proposals um. From the selected firm because you're, you're oftentimes first order of business is really identifying what the full scope of the project is. And kind of, you know, fine tuning it, uh, doing the cost benefit analysis, all those types of things. But you don't, so you don't have the full program to get the proposal at the same time as the RFQ. So, since we have to work on our, hopefully work on our purchasing policy, I ran this by Pete and he said, well. The option might be for you folks to waive the RFQ, RFP process, but I wanna assure, assure you, there has been a process. And that the list of um vendors I'm looking at, there's eighteen. On-call engineering services that was selected by a panel at, at the cog with town engineers represented. And um, and then they broke down their kinda areas of specialty, so I kinda used that as my um deciding factor as to. Which five firms I think we might wanna get proposals from. Um, and it includes um those who uh specialize in highway, land, landscape architecture, planning studies. And traffic for these types of projects, um, and so there was five firms that I identified on this list of on-call uh engineers. Who I think, based on those specific, um, you know, areas of expertise, uh, we should get proposals from. And in doing so, they would um already have passed our Q process and just give us a proposal. Now, to give this all a kind of a realm, we don't have a ton of money here, what we're talking about, we're talking about less than a hundred thousand dollars. Probably less than seventy-five thousand dollars uh to do these, like, two, two projects, to sculpt them out. Do a conceptual plan, give us um a, a good estimate of costs. And potentially fill out some, uh, give us enough information to fill out the grant application. Um, I'm looking at lots if there's a potential funding source and there may be other federal funding sources, although those are. Challenging to really get, so, um, I just wanted to come to you at Pete's recommendation to see if you were. Comfortable with this approach and willing to waive the RFQ, RFP process. Um, I did file the RFQ, RFP process uh with the coastal road projects. And the two firms that, I think it was two firms we've, we nailed it down to who gave us. The, you know, their, their one thing was like, this was really hard to give you a proposal, because we don't really know the full scope, so. Um, and that's the one where we picked race and we're going kinda each step, I'm coming back to you to approve. And they have to fine tune what their real proposal is because, you know, the projects change scope.
That sort of segues with weird questions, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
My, my question is, by going this route, which I can understand completely. Are we potentially going to jeopardize? Uh, you know, when we do get further down the pike on, on some of these projects. And we're looking at grants or state money or whatever, are, are we going to trip ourselves? And have to come back and redo it because it doesn't meet everybody's qualifications?
Um, that's a good question, I, I don't think so, particularly for the Lot Set program, I know it's not gonna be a problem. Because um it's on the town to do all the design and to follow our own procedures and getting that professional on board.
When we end up getting some, I.
Yeah, so if we get the state money through the Lot Set program, we're, how we do our design is on us and how we procure that. Design is on us. Right, and then I think, I can't guarantee, but I believe that going this route with an RFQ process already in place. Uh, even if where there were like federal funds involved that were satisfying the fact that there was an advertised RFQ process and. Uh, and we're also gonna require an RFP process uh from these selected firms so that um it is still competitive.
You just, you know, you, you hit on it, you know, with federal money and things like that.
Right.
I, I don't know if ARPA money would fall into that kinda.
Now, ARPA money seems to be more um loose than uh strict.
Yeah, but isn't that. What's happening now, I think they're calling back some.
Well, that's a, it was gonna be under new business, uh, and by the way, uh, because of the ten million dollar exemption, we could use our funds for this, this. This project, and, uh, so that, that would could potentially be a consideration for funding.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, I, I also can't recall offhand, but did we put some money away for the safe, for safe streets?
I don't know.
Mary Jane, so, Mary Jane, Mary Jane's on. Any, did we, did we allocate anything additional uh for safe streets uh, 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 projects?
I, I don't know if we've put any, we haven't put anything in this prior year, but there is still funding available in fund balance for safe streets.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the, the focus funds are the safe streets task force funds, and if you folks approve of this process, then I'll be working with them to fine tune the actual. You know, scope of the RFP before it goes out and they'll be involved in the process as well.
And one of them, I'm thrilled to see this coming forward at this point, because this is, this is, you know, not just a study that was put. That was done, put on the shelf, and pulled out fifteen years later, we do it, these are two of the early, earliest recommendations.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
They're both tricky spot locations.
Yeah, North Madison Road, um, Safe Streets Task Force already did a lot of public outreach to the neighborhoods and the school uh district. Uh, and kinda really fine tune a scope, a scope of work, but there's some technical issues with, that really need to be vetted before we can really. Define exactly what the project is, um, Long Hill Road is more of the concept that was in the report, uh, so we're just trying to, you know, build our way.
You're gonna have the uh housing there on, on Hubbard and that Long Hill and housing is gonna get busier.
Yes.
Long Hill and Hubbard, so, these are both, these are both good projects to be mapping out and thinking ahead about.
Yeah, and this would be, you know, there's this long-term plan for Long Hill Road with um linking the schools, which is the middle school to the high school, this will do that with. Hubbard being needed as well, and then um going further up Long Hill at least to the.
Great. Yeah, great. Anything further?
What do you need from us?
Just a motion to approve the way of the RFQ, RFP process to receive proposals.
Oh, second.
Anything further, comments or questions, hearing none, try your minds, all in favor? Yes. I want you to recess for five minutes. All right, we're at item eight, uh, consider it takes possible action, set a public hearing date of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Guilford Town Hall and via Zoom, on programs to be considered for the twenty twenty-three Neighborhood Assistance Act program, is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions, this is our annual event where we recommend certain projects for the nonprofits, uh, for that. Inclusion in the Neighborhood Assistance Act, so, uh, anything further? Uh, those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Uh, opposed, same, refuses, there are none motion carries. Uh, item nine, discuss to take possible action on noise variance application for the Guilford Police Department's National Night Out taking place October sixth. Twenty twenty-three, rain date of ten seven, um, is there a motion?
Second.
Second, just gonna say, this is one of the, the fun activities every year, uh, so, but I have one question. Uh, deputy chief, Massey, um, there's a Congo line that happens sometimes, and I've been known to. Uh, be behind the chief uh in the Congo line, uh, will you be participating? You got, you're pleading the fifth, I take it. And by the way, uh, just for the folks, this was moved from, I think it's traditionally earlier in the year, this is a, a little bit later now, so. All right, uh. Uh, do we try your minds, all in favor?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
This twentieth, so. That's board selection meeting and that got moved because of Juneteenth?
No, we, we haven't moved anything, have we?
Well, yeah, it is Tuesday.
It got moved to Tuesday, I don't know the reason.
Yeah, I think.
Looking at this public hearing.
Right, when you did the meeting calendar, we moved the um, the regular meeting to the twentieth because of Juneteenth.
Probably because there are folks who are. Gotta make sure that it is even though.
Uh huh, yep, that's the regular meeting.
Well, not, not right yet.
Not right yet. Well, I am personally thrilled that it's moved to the twentieth, in case you would like to know that. I didn't, well, I'm just getting back very late on Sunday night, the eighteenth, so I'd be very happy.
Are you flying a bell?
Uh, uh, I'm flying Air France coming back from France, hopefully, hopefully I'm gonna get back on the eighteenth, so, um. Ha- not having to get up to for the nineteenth, not that I personally would have asked to move the meeting, but I'm thrilled that it is moved.
Anything we could do to accommodate?
That's right, I know, it's all about me.
It's all about calendars, I can't believe.
All right. So item ten, appointments and resignations. Uh, ten dot one, act on a resignation received from Lauren Han from the Youth and Family Services Board. I will make that motion with appreciation and regret. Is there?
Second. I think we all second.
Yeah. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Uh, ten dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Mark Wasserman as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for terms that expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, is there a motion?
Some.
And a second, just a quick comment. Uh, Mark was on the, on the commission for a long time and chaired it. He went off and now it's, it's been off for over a year, so he's going to come back. So let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same accused of there are no motion carries.
I'll just make a comment that his application is, I mean, his name is at the bottom, but there's, he didn't, if he filled it out, it didn't show up.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's, I mean, we know him and we want him, but we might want to make sure that get, that gets filled out.
Yeah, Trey, I don't know whether we have the old one or have him.
Yeah, I'll email it to you. It might just have been a glitch with Word Pack. I'll, I'll email it to you.
Okay. Uh, ten dot three, act on a recommendation to reappoint Kerry Federici to the Board of Police Commissioners for terms that expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Be happy to pack that recommendation.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a, that motion is unanimous. Uh, ten dot four, act on a recommendation to reappoint Robin Campo to the Land Acquisition Commission as a member at large, for terms that expire June twenty eighth, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. And uh, ten dot five, act on a recommendation to reappoint David Weinberg to the Cable Television Advisory Board, for term to expire uh, on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
It's a short term. What's, what's that about?
His previous term went over before he was reappointed, so that's filling out the two year term that they're allowed. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
And then the other quick, I'm happy to make a motion, but I'm just sort of remind everybody what cable television advisory board does these days?
Uh, yes, those are the folks that manage the GCTV franchise.
I see. Okay, good.
They get the funds.
They get the funds, that's right, which are being apparently under attack and are being diminished or attempting to be diminished by the respective cable providers in the state of Connecticut. Interesting. Well, there's a significant challenge in the, the GCTV has undergone a, an exercise to determine how, what, how and what they're going to be going forward.
The technology may have changed. I mean, it seems that it's getting, if it's not antiquated streaming. Right.
Right, and.
Different model.
They now have the capacity to stream directly out of the community center because they have their facilities set up in that room. Uh, you know, they've got a bunch of equipment there. Uh, and the equipment we put in will also allow for them to do streaming. You know, so there's an evolution that's slowly starting. Um, as you, as you know, we are no longer doing, you know, sneaker net with, you know,
Yeah.
nineteen seventy five technology. So.
All right. So this board is charged with reviewing their mission and Mr. Weinberg is interested in participating.
And he's been, he's been chair for a while, I believe.
Right.
All right. So let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, request for use of town property. Act, a request from the Guilford Police Department to use the green and place a sign. The green advertising is national night out, twenty twenty three, taking place October sixth, twenty twenty three. Uh, rain date, October seventh. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Uh, let me try mine, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, item eleven dot two, act on a request of the Guilford Agricultural Society to place a sign of the green advertising of the Guilford Fair taking place September fifteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Sign placement ninety three to nine seventeen. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
Uh, before, I'm not suggesting that we don't do this, uh, but I have received now two uh, correspondences from members of the, the community of Jewish, Jewish faith. Uh, and the, the parade actually falls on Rosh Hashanah this year. It's one of those, this is the first time that I've ever recalled that happening, but I'm not that familiar with the Jewish calendar. It moves all over the place. So the first individual that I reached out, that reached out to me, I had a conversation with them, explained what I understood would be some challenges with moving the parade. But then suggested, and I suggested that asset was okay from getting forwarded to the Guilford Agricultural Society because it is the agricultural society's parade, is not a town parade, and it is staffed by volunteers. And it has, you know, the, the parade has occurred on that Saturday for the hundred and fifty four years that the, the second longest fair in the state of Connecticut has been held. So there, there's a challenge there. So I, just early this morning, I received, I checked my emails. There's a second correspondence, which I'll, I'll do the same thing if I said to, and I, I haven't heard back from the agricultural society. I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised. So, so, but there is a challenge around that. So anyway, I digress. So we have a motion. Uh, let me try your minds.
Uh, yeah, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, item eleven dot three, act on a request from the Guilford Art Center to place signs on the green, advertising its summer youth art program, uh, six twenty four to eight eighteen, and its craft expo, uh, seven fourteen, seven sixteen. Sign placements, uh, are six fifteen, six twenty nine, and seven one to seven fifteen respectively. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Eleven dot four, act on request from the Henry Whitfield Museum to place signs on the green advertising its music at the museum, six eighteen, uh, nature stewards field day eight five, it's welcome fest nine nine, and firelight festival twelve one. Sign placements, six four to six eighteen, seven twenty two to eight five, eight twenty six to nine nine, and eleven seventeen to twelve one respectively. Is there a motion?
Who?
Second.
And uh, just a quick question, Firelight Festival, did I, did I miss that in the past? Or is that new? They've done that before.
The night of the.
It's Christmas tree lights, late afternoon.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Right, right.
You're busy.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Eleven dot five, act on a request from the Rowery Club to place a sign on the green, advertising its lobster fest and shoreline lobster run taking place June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, sign placement six ten to six twenty four.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll second it.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Eleven dot six, act on a request from the Conservation Commission to use the green on April twenty first, twenty twenty four, and April twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Trace.
Yes.
Oh, that's twenty twenty five, yeah.
Yes.
For its birthday celebration. Oh, geez, wow. Two years out.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, is a motion in a second?
Apparently there's reasonable optimism that Earth will still. So that's encouraging in and of itself.
Well, that's the work of the Conservation Commission. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
I do have a question.
Yes.
About this, um, sanitary facilities, and I'm asking, it comes up on the later form too.
Yeah.
Um, it's answered with a question, they say, describe sanitary facilities to be provided by applicant and the response is town hall, question mark? Do we, is, is town hall, do we do that over?
No. No, not typically.
Yeah. So we should communicate that to them. I wouldn't think it would be, that they would need to provide anything from one to four in the afternoon and people come and go, it's not like.
Well, it depends if they're.
It's a Saturday, right? It's a Saturday, the library's open. Believe me, those facilities get used by people other than using the library. So, so is that a fair response? If someone put down, describe sanitary conditions to be provided by the applicant, didn't say library. Well, libraries is town building, it's open. Right? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
Trace, let's just follow up with them, uh, see what their plans are. Is there any consideration for porta potties?
Sure, I'll, I'll follow up.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And uh, eleven dot seven, move from the table and act on a request for the community dining room to use the green on August eighth, twenty twenty three, uh, for its community dinners on the green. Is there a motion?
Make the motion, but Sue makes a good point, the same exact problem.
Well, we have, we have Andrea online here.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Um.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning, Andrea.
Let's make the motion in seconds, so we can.
Yeah, motion, motion second.
Okay.
Okay. So questions for Andrea?
So Andrea.
Do I, okay, go ahead.
You asked a question on your application, um, I'm just trying to get.
Are there bathrooms available on the green?
Are there bathrooms available on the, your, your activity, what day is it of the week?
It's, it's actually a Tuesday night.
Weekday evening. Okay, well, once again, the library is open until eight o'clock and the library is on the green. We don't have public bathrooms on the green.
Right, okay.
In the past, some activities, if we approve this, and I, I need to, my colleagues need to make sure I'm saying this right. Sometimes the, the not for profits provide a porta potty themselves.
Okay, um, I, I don't believe we were doing that, or it wasn't our budget to do it, unfortunately.
I think you need to consider the need for, I would say, if it's a dinner event for a hundred and fifty people, I think you would definitely want to have.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also on the next item, um, we will need parking spots blocked off at four P M. Is that something that needs to go through?
Yeah, we'll go through police department, yeah.
I'm not sure how you do parking for that many.
Yeah.
People, that might be a difficulty.
Um, I think, Andrea, I apologize for not having given you a heads up on this earlier, but we have a policy about use of the green, uh, which is Guilford nonprofits only. Uh, you guys are a Branford entity, uh, though you serve many Guilford residents and we appreciate the fact that you extend this, the services to us. So what I am going to suggest is that we table this for, for today. While you, uh, in my office, I can certainly work with you to identify a Guilford nonprofit who would be willing to partner with you on this application.
I can answer that now if you'd like.
Okay.
Uh, women in family life?
That's, um.
We should get.
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, yeah, we, we should, we should get an application that reads from the Women in Family Life Center, so. Um, uh, let's see, we've, we've got some, we've got some time on this, right? Um, I'm assuming that you are successful in getting Women in Family Life Center as the sponsor for this event. Um, I see no reason that you wouldn't be able to continue your planning efforts, uh, but we're just, uh, in order to be consistent with our rules of the road, uh, that would be the process, uh, I think this board would like to follow. Are you okay?
So I, I just want to, just want to be clear about that. So meaning that this would be a woman in family life event or just there's?
No, they could call, they could call it whatever to, they could get sponsored by, you know, Women in Family Life Center making an application on behalf of, um,
Okay.
The community dining services.
Okay.
So that would be the way to do it.
If they be the organization in item one.
Right.
And I was wondering, as long as Andrea is here, maybe could you take a minute and tell us about your event and what you're trying to accomplish and take advantage of the opportunity?
Yeah, so last year, um, we had eight weeks of community dinners on the green. Um, we had them on the, on the Branford Green, correct. Um, however, you know, we've got people coming from everywhere and this was open to all of our service areas, which does include Guilford. This year, we decided we'll extend it, make it nine weeks and then include the surrounding towns. So now we are going to go to East Haven, North Branford. North Branford doesn't have a green, so we're going to use their field, um, and then Guilford as well. Um, cilantro's was going to be the sponsor for all of the food. It's basically to spread awareness so that people know that we're available, people know that we want to help, you know, help more in Guilford and maybe people just don't know about us, you know? So that's kind of the goal and to, to feed people in need that maybe don't want to, don't want you to know they're in need, you know, it's that kind of a thing. Um, so we made it more of a community event. Um, including with the dinners will be, you know, many different kids' activities. It's, it's part of our family night that we do on Tuesdays. So we probably would have a DJ and I don't know, you know, these are things, are, are there rules for that? Is there, you know, it's a two hour timeframe. It's five to seven. Um, and typically, you know, we'll have a DJ, maybe we'll have a character that we hire, um, you know, fun character for the kids. Um, and not, we don't do necessarily like any kind of inflatables because that's obvious, that's too much of a liability. Um, but we've done, you know, different arts and crafts in the past. Um, you know, the Parks and Rec gets involved. We are actually going to be part of the Parks and Rec Jake, Jacob Beach concert series. So in addition to this was going to be that as well because we want to have our presence known uh, more in Guilford, so we thought that might be a good way. So same kind of a thing for Jacob's Beach, it would be a restaurant sponsors it. Um, and we come down there and we bring all of the, the arts and crafts. And I mean, we do, we do it as well. We do all the desserts and waters and stuff like that. So the restaurant supplies food, the basic food. Um, so I mean, that's, I guess that's, that's kind of it and it's a really great time. Um, last year, we had our national night out on the Branford Green and that ended up, and it was part of our family night, ended up being about five hundred people. So, um, we don't anticipate that for Guilford necessarily because this will be our first time. So we probably will have two hundred, we're thinking. So any questions about it?
Um, just a quick question, uh, um, deputy, uh, deputy, uh, police chief Massey's on the line, uh, with bands. We typically, uh, want some kind of affirmation from the police commission about noise.
Yeah, typically they're going to do a noise variance.
At a certain time though, right?
Uh, if you're going to have a band playing, uh, if you can, I can get your email from you and send you the proper application paperwork and the description for how to do it offline.
Oh, okay. Let me put that down. Okay.
Andrea, do the, the estimated people, one fifty to two hundred, do they, are they all there at the same time for the two hours? I'm just thinking about the parking.
Yeah, so typically, um, people arrive exactly at five o'clock. Um, and we serve food for an hour is typically what it is. So from five to six, we have a couple of lines, we kind of have it down to a science now. Um, but yes, there will, they will need to park. Um, you know, we didn't, we honestly, we didn't have any issues with parking last time. Um, hopefully Guilford won't be an issue either. Uh, but I also don't know Guilford as well as I know Branford, but Branford's pretty busy, you know? Um, a lot of walking around, right? So I'm assuming Guilford, uh, in the evening or around that time, people walk around, go to the shops or stuff like that. I don't know. Maybe the restaurants are over there too. Um, so, but I don't think, it, it was never an issue, honestly.
Okay, so I don't think it will be a problem.
That's helpful. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want parking spots blocked out, as you say, you should maybe work that out with the, yeah, you might not need to.
So who do I need to do that with? For the parking, is it public works or?
Not, you would talk to me as well for that.
Okay. Um, is there a chat in here? No.
No, we'd have to chat.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll have to, do you want my email now?
I'll, I'll get a hold of you through Tracy if she has some of your application reels.
All right, perfect, okay. Okay.
Uh, is there a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Uh, in a second, the, the motion.
Some.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
All right, Andrea, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Uh, item twelve, committee reports.
Um, the Housing for Economic Development Plan Committee will be meeting, um, the first week in July and we hope to have some, um, updates regarding the Woodruff property. So the next select meeting, I might be able to, I mean, I don't have any updates, but I'm hoping to get some updates.
Yeah, we all are.
Yes.
Um, correspondence, anybody comments of correspondence? Or have any correspondence? Wanted to share? Okay, very good. Old business. We'll, we'll take a whole business for, for your app, so you don't have to sit for the, for, for, well, another, another item or two.
I didn't, I.
Okay, let me, let, let, let me bring it up.
You can come on up.
Yeah, you can come on up and say.
Have a seat.
Um, yeah, the business is just an update on the Ever Source and or, uh, the, the vegetation management and capital projects. So, uh, I still haven't received the final answers from, uh, Mr. Magnoli. Uh, I did have a conversation with him last week. Uh, I still haven't received the final answers from, uh, uh, Mr. Magnoli, uh, I did have a conversation with him last week. Uh, he indicated that the corporate leader were having some issues with some of the questions and the answers to some of the questions. Um, I said, uh, just do the best you can and get us the answers that, uh, that you can get us. Um, so I was off on Friday, Thursday and Friday, so I haven't had a chance to, to follow up with him, uh, nor did I see, uh, an email from him, I may have missed it because there were.
He's golfing.
You gotta get a few emails over time. Um, so we are continuing to wait for them, uh, he knows that I'm not gonna set, uh, a public hearing until such time as, uh, we have those answers. And that's gonna take a couple of weeks, so their vegetation management, uh, plan, program is on hold until such time as they can, uh, provide us with information.
Can I say anything now or?
Certainly can.
Oh, I can say, okay, Cynthia Damer, four forty.
We're gonna, we're gonna consider this public forum at this point.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, I'm Cynthia Damer, four forty, Great Hill Road in Guilford. First of all, I wanted to thank the board of selectmen because you've been gracious and listening to our concerns and I know you've responded and I'm very appreciative of that. Uh, there was a letter to the editor in the Courier that made a remark about people complaining to our first selectmen and I want it stated for the record that you've been more than gracious and I'm not complaining. That everyone has been responsive and listening and helpful, whether or not we can get EverSource to, uh, compromise on their level of tree removal remains to be seen. But I did want to report to all of you that EverSource is proceeding as we speak, starting Monday, a, a week ago, with drilling the holes and installing the posts along Long Hill Road. Um, so there's no way, you know, when we asked to have alternative routes be considered, that's a moot point at this point because clearly they aren't considering anything else other than their intentions, so they're going forward. Secondly, I wanted to tell you that a week ago, my husband and I did stop and talked to the crew of EverSource that was preparing of the, the, um, telephone poles were delivered across in front of my house at four forty-five A M. Monday morning, we were awakened to the sound of this truck. And I went running, put in my bathrobe to talk to the man who was very nice there again. I'm not trying to be, you know, like crazy about it, but he was gracious enough to not put a telephone pole in my front yard on the grass, not knowing how long it's gonna lay there, instead put it in the weeds across the street, so I was very appreciative of that, but that was an early morning. Um, we, we talked with the construction supervisor, whose name is Drew, and like again, he was very nice, but he was the person in charge, had all the paperwork. And he did not know any answers in terms of beyond this mile and a half. What was EverSource's intention, there's been nothing, when I told him that the, um, the tree cutting was on pause, he was shocked because no one had told him that. Another issue of, excuse me, the, in EverSource, the right hand does not know what the left hand is doing, and I can assure you that is the case. Uh, the tree, uh, the guy who was installing the tree, leaving off the tree post, worked for a contractor hired by EverSource. Goes, this happens all the time, I delivered poles in Madison and several weeks later, I was told to come and pick them all back up again, deliver them somewhere else, so. Uh, that is the current state of affairs. And I'm hoping, my best hope is that we can work with EverSource to get some of the trees in question that are perfectly healthy trimmed instead of cut to the ground, that's my best hope. Um, I also just chatted with Kevin McGee a little while ago to, this morning. And if, just to make you aware, if you go around looking at trees, now all the sycamore trees are looking diseased, I don't know why, he was gonna find out, but look around town at the sycamore trees, none of them look very healthy either. And I am convinced that in the rationale to do this project, EverSource has no idea, and apparently they are starting to keep track of how many power outages are caused by dead trees versus healthy live trees that come down suddenly. So I know personally, on that stretch, there've been a whole lot of power outages due to in the last five to seven years, dead trees, I've run, run across them when I've been driving and had to call the town and say, there's a tree down across the road, so they're all dead that are falling down. So that's all I have to say and I appreciate all your hard work, I really do.
Thank you very much for those comments.
So, thank you.
Have a wonderful trip.
I'll try not to have nightmares about coming home and finding my trees all come down.
Excellent. Anybody else at all business? Um, I did have just a couple of, uh, items, uh, under business, uh, Juneteenth was mentioned earlier, um, you know, based on us moving the, the meeting, at this point, uh, had some, uh, discussions, loose discussions with some of the representatives, some, a couple of the unions about extending the Juneteenth holiday, adding the Juneteenth holiday. Um, I think we're entering into a round of contract negotiations with some of the, you know, things, I think that's probably the more appropriate time to, uh, to, to, to discuss those, that. Uh, but a larger question is, is it, uh, something that we as a board want to take a position on, uh, as we go into the negotiations, or do we just, as a board, just want to say we are going to observe it and give, uh, give that holiday? Say, we're, we're considering giving that holiday, but in exchange for one.
So, I'd say federal holiday, federal holiday now, and sort of a state, state holiday as well.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's a state holiday, it's a federal holiday. Well, I, I've been here long enough that I, when I worked, you know, I started working in this, in town in nineteen seventy-seven, Martin Luther King wasn't a holiday, and at one point, I believe town employees got Washingtons and Lincolns and then it was folded into one president, so we lost, quote, I mean, you know, a, a holiday was removed really because we just celebrate President's Day. So, uh, you know, these things do happen and, and Guilford took a while to, when Martin Luther King became a federal, the town didn't jump on it right away, I think it was about two or three years and then at some point, and I was not, you know, sitting at this table at that point, but let's get the town, whoever, the selectmen, the board of selectmen at the time, made it a, a, a holiday, you know, so then it became a holiday, you know, in contracts and I don't even know if all the unions existed at that point or they existed differently, so.
Are you saying it is or is not a state holiday?
Which, Martin Luther King or?
State, I'm, I'm not sure, uh, we could probably Google that.
Second reason I ask is does town clerk and tax office and things like that, do they have to be open or do they have to be closed? Um, at this point in time, I mean, because that's the determining factor where the town halls open.
Right.
Town hall's not open for whatever, for those reasons, then I think we're gonna be obligated. I mean, it's gonna be adding, do they still have a floating holiday?
They voted to make it a state holiday in the waning, whatever this means, in the waning days of twenty twenty-two legislative session, so I don't know when it kicks in.
I believe it's a state holiday, this, this year's state holiday.
Twenty twenty-three.
So. As is Lincoln's, as is Lincoln's birthday, just so you know, what does that, what does that mean to?
County clerk and tax office and things like that.
It only means the state, all of that means is the state employees right now. Everyone else, uh, bu- both businesses and, and municipalities.
So it's not a, a legal holiday where they can't do business?
No, no, for us to not do business, no, we, we could do business then, we could choose not to. Um, it's.
Well, that would be like, okay.
It's, it's, uh, something that you'll have to decide.
Do they still have a float, do most of the bargaining units still have a, a floating day where because of Sandy's?
No, most of that's been removed and replaced with.
Why this?
Personal, yeah, special.
I, I do remember in the whole Martin Luther King thing, Wildwood was, um, a town that took, for, they did not make it a holiday, even though most of the towns did, and then there were demonstrations eventually, not right away, but.
Yeah.
It ended kind of in a bad way. Yeah.
Years later.
Well, they, yeah.
What kind of a dollar value do you think it places on?
It's hard to, is it, is it any different than either holiday, I mean, it's, it's, it's a holiday.
What does a additional day of cost to them?
The, well, I, yeah. The salary is the same. I mean, for salary, but I don't understand what your question is then.
You take all those salaries and add them up.
Yeah.
You know, i- it, uh, my struggle with it is it doesn't really change the out-of-pocket costs, it's just the fact that the buildings aren't open and they're every day up. I mean, our, our cost really isn't different, except when we have to be in someplace and pay overtime at that point. Well, you know what I'm saying?
There's a couple of these police.
Everything's closed.
Police fire, there's, there's less service, not more expense for most.
Right. From, from most. There's lesser, no, but there is some more expense.
Yeah, public safety.
Because you have certain individuals that still have to work, whether it be police, fire, or whatever.
Right.
They're going to get another day, you know, is that a million dollars or is it a hundred thousand dollars?
So you're right, Charles, your cost to the, to the town employees, non-public service people is probably minimal because it's another holiday, you're paying them anyway. But public safety, if it's a holiday, that means that there's somebody taking a holiday, someone else has to replace, Chris Massey's on the line still? Yeah, so someone else has to replace and replace it time and a half, there's, there's a significant cost that comes into your police and fire for replacements for holiday. That's where your cost's gonna come in, I think, and of course, if there's any kind of emergency for public works, but that'd be the same as any other holiday.
Rick, uh, uh, Mitch, what percentage of the town employees, um, would not get that holiday because they're part-time employees?
We have about fifty uh, regular part-time employees compared to just over two hundred full-time employees, so about a quarter of them would be without pay.
So, so that would offset some of the, uh, some of the costs associated with police and fire?
Yeah, presuming that they all, but, but presuming they worked that day and presuming that most of those people, some are eight-hour employees.
They'll work around it.
Yeah, so, some are six-hour employees. Um, you know, for, for employee, for employees working public for parks, maintainers in the summer, they're actually losing money because we would, we wouldn't be paying them, they have listed days pay.
Right, I mean, we wouldn't close, you know, beaches and stuff, but.
No. Well, if you don't close the beaches, that means you're paying whoever's gotta be down there staff also. If we're gonna pay Parks and Rec, there may be overtime for Parks and Rec as well, if it's a holiday, you have to be paid for.
Yeah.
I, those are things that need to be considered.
If it's a holiday, we wouldn't close, that we wouldn't, June, no. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be another, it's a budget issue, is what it becomes, yeah.
Well, my suggestion would be to wait until the next go-round on all the contracts and we, all of the paid holidays are negotiated at some point.
Yeah, the challenge there is that the contracts are stacked.
One, yeah, yeah.
So. What's the first up?
Public Works is up right now.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's frustrating, it's, it's inevitable.
The only, the only contract that's up right now is Public Works, the others have all been, we'll have several of them the following year. I mean, if it does, it does, it does get folded into one contract, you have to be pressured to push them on to the others, um.
To Sandy's point, you know, I know there, in the past, it's been confused and with different dates, but are there any other state, are there any, uh, f- federal, state holidays that we don't participate in?
Lincoln's birthday, Lincoln's birthday is still a state holiday. And Sandy's correct, we, we.
Changed it to President's Day.
Yeah.
And that served the third Monday of, oh, of February always, and that was the end of that and.
Okay, but.
And police and fire still have Lincoln's birthday.
Zerber.
State employees get Lincoln's birthday off, right?
Right, so does our, our police and fire, I believe both those contracts still have Lincoln's birthday until. But they're twenty-four seven, we have to work that into any other holiday, but yeah, they, they still have Lincoln's birthday, um, with Chris on the line, is that correct?
I am and they do.
Okay. But all the other, all the other departments, uh, the unions and, and non-unions all, um, have folded it into President's Day?
I, I think this is a sensitive issue with this holiday, kind of came about after the whole George Floyd situation, and I for one think we should observe it, if you think it's too late to do it in this year, I wouldn't fight that, but I think we should observe it, at least starting in twenty twenty-four.
Matt had asked me to do a survey, I, I didn't even survey, CCM did a survey of, um, other towns and cities, it's split. Uh, as of right now, there's a lot of towns that, that, that have it, as you might figure, most of the larger cities have already observed, have already announced that they're observing it, a lot of the smaller towns have not. Some of them have asked it to be traded for another holiday in their negotiations, some have not, I mean, it's all over the board. Uh, but there's no one pattern saying, no, we're not gonna do it, or we're only gonna do it under negotiation, others have, you know, it's all over the place, but I'd say, uh, a rough guess, I have to go back and look, I'd say it's about fifty-fifty right now, maybe still more that have not, because there's a lot of towns that have not acted and are waiting, uh, for the negotiations or to see whatever else is doing. Well, like you're discussing right now.
I, you know, I, I, my primary inclination is that we should be matching federal and state holidays or governmental agencies, where some see, uh, the state of Connecticut, where, state, some agency of the, uh, United States, uh, and pieces. But then the question comes, should we give off Lincoln's Day? Right, my answer to that is no, that was, that was already done nationally.
Right.
The, the President's Day now, so we got an extra, uh, they got an extra, so, you know, uh, not to be disingenuous, but I could see it one way, but not for the other, uh, so. So, uh, so we have some time to make that decision before, uh, but I think it's safe to say that, that at this point, we're not gonna make a decision for this Juneteenth. Is that there? Unless somebody wants to do, otherwise, I mean, it's two weeks away.
Yeah.
And you know, places like the library or Park and Rec may have already posted, uh, plans and programs that they, I mean, they could cancel them, but. It's, yeah.
I, true, I don't know, I agree with that. Good, good.
I mean, yeah, the, the, you know, what we do with the employees is different from whether we acknowledge it in some way and it's, you know, it's an event. It's different from the time.
Do you want to take action right now that we're gonna approve to the teeth, uh, effective, uh?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-four?
I, I think we should, I think that will help other towns, it's one more town that we made a decision, and one more, you know.
The only problem I have with that is by us doing something today, is that going to require you know, when the bargaining units, you, when the bargaining units here that we do that today, is that going to interpret to them that they're entitled to something immediately?
No, you're, 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 well, immediately as in, as in twenty twenty-four, if that's what the motion is, yes. I mean, they would be entitled, I mean, we, without, without, what you're saying is you want to award a benefit without negotiations, which we've done in other, other times.
Anyway, that, I mean, I think what you meant by a motion was that we agree in concept going forward that we're gonna include Juneteenth and.
The first, the first observance of which would be, uh, June of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Someone want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll put it, I'll make that motion.
I'll set it up.
Further discussion, comment? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Cusels, motion carries in, thank you all. All right, uh, I have one other item under, uh, new business, Charles, um, this is, uh, I, I you, you brought up something a minute, a few minutes ago about with the, uh, debt, uh, ceiling deal that was, uh, committed in Washington recently and signed into, into law. Around the claw, the clawback on ARPA funds. My preliminary, I, I reached out to Rose's office for a, a better understanding of it, uh, I'm not sure that the implementer bills have been written yet and the specifics around that. Um, I, uh, I, and I'm not sure that, I did not hear anywhere, uh, that it applied to the distribution directly to the municipalities or to the states and, you know, the municipalities through the states. It was some of the other, uh, ARPA funds that they were talking about, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, you just hear those kinds of things, you know, I thought we were under control this, we had assigned a lot of foundations.
Yeah, and, and I was con- actually contemplating a special meeting, um, to, to see whether or not we wanted to allocate some funds, uh, because in particular, uh, to what are known as sub-recipients, like the, uh, the Gilbert Foundation. We have awarded a half a million dollars to them, okay, so that means they're entitled, effectively, it's spent money from the town of Gilbert's perspective. So the thought was, um, if there is an opportunity, there's, there's more than likely gonna be an opportunity for us to match that for next year, I've already had, um, I already had conversations with a, a bunch of nonprofits. I attended the, uh, the, the foundation's introduction of the program at the library, there were twenty-some.
Yeah, it was kind of like a queen for a day story. I'm not being disrespectful, I mean, it was, it was enlightening to hear how a lot of not-for-profits really suffered through COVID financially, you know? a lot of nonprofits really suffered through COVID financially, you know.
Well, and just to clarify, we didn't assign it to the foundation, we assigned it to the foundation to distribute.
Technically, we gave it to the foundation to dispose of per the parameters that they were establishing.
Dispose of.
Right, it's in.
I just didn't want it to be appear there. It was to, you know, administration to their organization or anything like that.
The the term of art, Peter and I had worked this as subrecipient. So they are now a subrecipient of those. And there's an actual agreement in place, a subrecipient agreement in place that defines what they're going to do and what they have to do to report it. So I I was contemplating suggesting that we allocate an additional half a million dollars. We still have about two point five million in that account for the mere, for the for the reason, in case it was subject to a clawback provision, we would have expended it, so it would be technically available for clawback. I don't have a definitive answer on it yet. So I I'm not sure we need to act right now, but we may need to act at at some point.
Okay.
It's just an update. Anybody else with new business? Public Forum, anyone on the line from Public Forum? I don't think so. All right. Item seventeen, discuss to take possible action on appeals residents in accordance with section two forty-seven thirty-one, right of appeal. Article seven, early tax leave program, particular session may be required. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Let me try your minds, all in favor? Motion carries. Peter, any reason you want to be on this? Particularly as it relates to the email I responded to, I think was on Friday. Between, I think, the fourteenth and fifteenth hole. Because I got a text that said this and somebody needs you. So anyway, Pete, you you want to be on that?
No, I I I don't think it's necessary. If something comes up, you want to discuss, you should not attack.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, thanks.
There we are. You wait a few more hours, that will come out, we think they're gonna do the whole job with instead of goggles.
Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session? Second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. In executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken. But as a result of the appeals, we have a list of those that were approved. They have lists those that were denied. And at least one that's requiring more information, we'll pass those along to staff to notify the affected residents or applicants. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Good meeting. Good meeting, guys.